...the immediate process of good, uh, to build our, um, systems in Delphi. Um, but we need to be planning for the future as well. Obviously, we, we wanted to do residential development in, in Delphi and bring industry to the area. So as part of that strategic planning process, we always need to be looking ahead to see what that impact is going to be on, on water and wastewater and other resources that are a part of the, um, the city's infrastructure. So completing the current project and the phases that we are going through now, being able finally to, to maintenance on existing towers, once we have some backup in the system, those are huge things that, uh, that will keep us hopefully good into the, uh, into the next several years, but then more. We always need to be looking ahead. We need to update our economic development plans and as part of that, look at our infrastructure needs and do not wait from here to raise our water rates so that we don't have, uh, some official funding in the system to be able to tackle maintenance and, um, uh, to, you know, to plan five years out and ten years out rather than even that can down low. So, um, I think it's part of our, um, update of economic development, um, plans and strategic plans for the city that we constantly need to be looking forward to the types of industries and what really plans we need to learn, the types of residential development and what that will be what there's needs as well, including the types of services.
Mr. Artie, we have the next question. Okay. It was said earlier that, um, we have separation in our town, uh, low class and the class, upper class, whatever class you want to call it. Um, I'm not blind, like, to feel often that I don't have a problem with, "Don't belov people all in places," as the song says, or whatnot. I don't care. People are people, and if that's what happens, then people deserve their guilty, then we're all, then that's wrong. What can we do to fix that problem? Is that what they, Delphi, right? Or is it everybody to go belov, everybody else? And get along? So who cares? What can you make of your, how am I going to fix that thing if that's a problem? Please, if you can hear, just ask me this. Mr. Roy, you have the first question. Okay.
I think a lot of the, uh, it all really starts with, um, making sure that, that you are part of the solution if there is a problem. And, um, you know, many communities have either much more serious problems than, than Delphi, but, um, you know, it probably starts in, in our school systems and in our, you know, community gatherings. What can we do to bring people together, you know, for, um, citywide kinds of functions that involve, um, you know, planning for the future or in, um, helping their fellow citizens? Again, coming back to, um, Ian's question earlier about what can we do to improve our neighborhoods, I think, uh, some of the programs that we talked about there with volunteers are creating opportunities for, um, for helping senior citizens in the community. I mean, we may not have the, uh, the income of, of others to fix up the properties or to, um, have a way to, uh, to go to, uh, to begin the, the other episode or something of that sort. Those are, are, are solutions that, um, you know, I think the community and the city, the government can help with, but, um, by, by creating roads for people to meet. But, um, a lot of it has to involve, um, our schools and how they interact, churches and how they interact with the community and just the community as a whole. I don't see it as a government function except where we can bring people together to help in, uh, whether it be a neighborhood improvement programs or, uh, this. I mean, to ensure that everyone is invited, you know, to, uh, to participate in the government or youth programs that, uh, get the, you know, people involved in finding out what government is and, and what it, what it means.
One of the things I hear a lot, not only in my town hall meetings, but just being
in the public in general, is that, that, that there's a, a wide variety in consensus that people feel left out. That's what the, that's what, besides the emergency aspect, that's what some of these early, uh, accomplishments of this early alert system could take care of. I don't know how many complaints I got on the city council of, you know, "I went to, I went to my business today, I couldn't get to my parking space because the road was closed. Why didn't they tell me?" We had a problem two years ago on Riley Road. It was, it was closed due to pavement. Nobody told anybody. When, when you communicate with your citizens in regards to things like that, they feel left out. And when they feel left out, their sense of pride goes and, and a lot of other things fall by the wayside. I think we have to do a better job communicating with our people. And that, you know, that makes them feel good. That makes them look at things and say, "Hey, I'm a part of this community." It's not, you know, otherwise, they sit there, and some of them, they sit there and they look at this stuff, "Well, they don't involve me, I guess I don't matter," and they get bitter about it. So I think, you know, I disagree with, with, with Ms. Worley with the fact that government is not the answer. It's not the answer, but it ensures that they can tell by just simply communicating with the citizens. And that can be done, you know, in newsletters, it could be done with this early alert system, it could be done on social media, it could be done in a number of ways. It could be done by knocking on their doors if it's not that big of an area and it's not, you know, that big of a deal as far as the projects are concerned. I mean, if you're going to paint the grocery street from below to the stoplight, you'll knock on everybody's door, but you find some way that's conducive to communicate with them and make them a part of the community. Because I guarantee you, a lot of people feel left out. And that, that bothers me. We shouldn't be that way. We're not, you know, a huge city. We shouldn't have people feeling, that many anyway, feeling left out. So there's my thoughts on that, and there's probably other ways to go about it.
How do you plan on bringing residential development in the city of Delphi?
Over the course of the last couple of years of being on the city council, I've worked with three developers and three or four landlords in an attempt to put some things like that together. We had a deal struck, thirteen acres on the South Hill that would have provided us with a small amount of housing, but it was a good start. Due to some communications here and there, that got mixed, which was a sad deal. It shouldn't have been. And we should have houses up there now. But I still have, um, meetings and conversations with developers, not only local, but some that are in Clinton County and Tipton County. And I'm excited for that, quite frankly. I would, uh, I'd love to be in a position to, um, talk turkey with these guys and say, "Hey, here's the lands that are available and this and that, and here are you guys ready to build houses. Let's see what we can put together." Be a mediator in between that and start working on it. What the city council would be called on to do is a number of things. Tax abatements. Waved or reduced hookup fees for water and wastewater. Road implementation. And the overall layout, to assist with the overall layout with area plan and, and that, uh, office, to figure out how to, um, lay that property out to be most conducive, not only for access and roads, but for, um, different qualities that, that would come to that. And it's a matter of leadership. I mean, you, you can't tell me that, that a strong leader couldn't sit down with these guys and say, "Hey, here's what the city of Delphi needs, here's what we'll do." And another thing is marketing. Uh, one of the things when Zinfor put his addition in up there on the South Hill, one of the things that Carolyn White here in the city of Delphi mainly, the, um, city council did, was they spent money helping market those houses through publicity, TV ads, and this, that, and the other. And when they opened that up for open houses, they had hundreds of people come in because of that marketing, uh, effort. And that helped to sell those quicker and get a return into the city and get more kids into our schools. Our schools are declining numbers. Each kid is, the state reimburses for five thousand dollars or more. We need more kids. We get more kids with more housing. So that's, that's where I would start. I'd be excited to get that built.
Mr. Roy, you have a response?
Yes, I think, I think residential development is really, really important for the future of Delphi. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of land available within the city limits that can help us to, to make that happen within, uh, within the city, you know, within the boundaries of the, of the, of the city of Delphi. It doesn't mean that we can't help with development outside, uh, in the county. Doesn't mean that we can't look at selectively at areas that we could annex. There are a number of tools that are becoming available now that will also help with infrastructure development. The residential tip that another county is looking at, uh, is, is also would be available within, uh, to the city. And that in particular could be beneficial to, um, take some of the hurdles to development off of the table for, as we try to market to, uh, to, you know, housing developers. And by that, I'm talking about roads, water, wastewater, things of that sort, that, uh, through the residential tip could be bonded and then gave back, um, over a period of time with taxes that are brought in from the development of that particular residential area. So, uh, those are tools that are just now becoming available. And, um, I know the annexation is sometimes a very negative, um, you know, term, you know, the nasty A, but selectively it may be a tool that, that would give benefit to us through, through that as well. There are a number of, of opportunities for residential development. It's sort of needed, and we need to, uh, to, to market our community and find ways to make it happen. I look forward to working on, to work with the council on those tools available to develop.
The next question, you guys by Councilman Yeller.
So while we have recently implemented additional restrictions past the, you know, government mandate for the coronavirus and, uh, so like, you feel that that would be necessary in Delphi at any point in the future?
Do you keep the first part of the question?
So I was just saying, now, a lot of yet has those additional restrictions on top of government's mandate, do you find that that would be necessary in Delphi currently or even possibly in the future?
Mr. Roy, you have the first question.
I think that the government is pretty amazing in all of it, and such, uh, control and helping, what it needs to work through, um, the, uh, COVID crisis, if you will. But local mandates have their own spikes from time to time. We're going through one right now. If we're up to, um, as of today, we've got a lot of deaths in Carroll County and two hundred and twenty-five cases. That's up dramatically in a very short period of time. We may find that, um, that there will be impacts where we need to, uh, to have more strict guidelines than the state mandates. I'm hopeful it doesn't come to that, but I think, uh, you know, as a community, our first, um, and as government, our, our first obligation is to help and save the, uh, residents. So if we see that there are spikes occurring and are actions that, that could be taken to help protect the community, then I would not be hesitant in making such a mandate or declaration.
You guys begin.
I don't, I don't see where the numbers justify a stricter policy. I think at some point you have to educate your citizens, which we did educate, and I think you have to, um, fall back on the fact and trust them to have some common sense to know what's going on and go from there. I don't, again, I don't see that the numbers justify anything worse. However, if they do, then I would be open to looking at different options and different things to, you know, uh, take a bad situation and make sure it doesn't get any worse. I, I wouldn't want to see that, but that's, that's kind of the way I feel about it, and I'd like to study.
President, President, Congress, you have the next question. President, President, Congress, I hope that if you are asking what kind of, that must be resolved, I think you please repeat.
I have one further question.
President, President, Congress. The next, uh, councilperson, may I ask a question by Councilman Woodford?
Can you describe what transparency means to you?
What that means to, oh, yeah, I've already, I'm excited.
Keep that same energy, we're rolling.
Okay. Um, to me, it means that, you're not starting yet though. Almost.
Same energy.
To me, it means that, um, you have to recognize that certain things, um, you've got to keep kind of close to the vest. And when you're competing for industry, when you're competing for businesses and stuff like that, you kind of got to keep that close to the vest because you don't want that to get out, because we are competing with other cities. And you don't want that, that to get out to some other city who then beats you to the punch and you lose that opportunity. However, government needs to realize that there are, um, golly, I, I couldn't even put a percentage on it, but there's a tremendous amount of documents and information and things like that that are in both, uh, well, in city building in general, that the public's entitled to. If they ask for it, they need to receive it. It's not a secret. It should never be withheld in the public. And you should always be as transparent as possible with that information. Now, there are some things that you can't release, but for the most part, those things that you can release, you should release them if they are asked. That's one segment of transparency to make. The other segment of transparency is let people know what's going on. If you have a meeting, if you have, um, a meeting coming up, make sure they, they have the opportunity to see it. Now, back to town hall meetings, I spent several town hall meetings by myself, watching the clock, but I gave them an opportunity to come. And that was important to me. Sometimes people didn't come, but at least I gave them the chance. You, and that's what I'm talking about here. Give the people a chance to come. Tell them when your meetings are. Tell them what happened in your meetings and provide minutes to them, to where the public can see them and know what's going on. This stuff is, is good to a point because people can sit at home and see it and, and watch it and this, that, and the other. But, but we still have to do the other stuff. We are paid with taxpayer money, and we work for the taxpayer. They deserve a right to know what we are doing with their money.
Mr. Roy, you have three minutes.
Well, I agree with, with a lot of what, uh, Ms. Jelisiewicz said. I think that transparency, um, is, is something that taxpayers expect and deserve, uh, to know how their money's are being spent. And, um, there, and almost all of that information comes from the, the citizen wants to, uh, wants to ask for, for documentation. But beyond that, um, I think we can do a lot more and communicate to citizens in advance of meetings, what the meeting is going to be, what the topics are going to be, the up for discussion, um, and to keep, uh, citizens informed through newsletters periodically, if it's not, if I was on the internet. And, um, you know, we send out, um, water quality reports, I think, twice a year, maybe feedback goes with, um, newsletter that indicates, you know, the key items that are, are happening about, you know, in the city and to, uh, look for other ways to get feedback, um, our citizens as to what services they would like to see us provide. We can't reveal that information, of course, that, uh, sales suggests that is part of economic development, uh, planning for getting industry to come to the area, but that's, that's a pretty small part of what, um, of the information that, that we operate with. Most of our meetings are held in public and for the public, and so that's, uh, that's what I see is, is transparency and, um, it's both of light and opportunity for, uh, for the citizens to have information and to provide feedback, um, to city officials, um, to the council and the process.
Then Councilwoman Isley, you have the question?
Um, we've talked a lot about Delphi, I assume, and all that now. You've got five councilmen, and I think we've got a pretty much own minds on some meetings. You'll be working with us, we'll be working with you. How are you going to handle when we disagree, when you come with a new ordinance, you've got this wonderful idea you want to do? We shoot it down. Could happen. We have to work together. So how are you going to react when we shoot your brand new great idea down? Say, "No." Because we're going to work and that's going to benefit the citizens. And you, you just want to play.
Ms. Roy, you have the first question.
I think it sort of comes back to, again, if we are planning for the future and looking at what our legislative agenda should be at the time that to involve the citizens and, um, providing, you know, and putting feedback into that process, then coming up with, um, with legislation is not going to be me handing something to the council, it's going to be us in workshops, working through issues that, um, that need to be, you know, step by step before we develop, um, our, uh, our ordinance or, uh, resolution. I've watched you since, since January, when we were fresh, uh, you know, all five of you, the brand new council people. And I think you've done a pretty amazing job of coming together, um, working with, uh, with the mayor to, uh, resolve issues. You've worked to build consensus, um, where as needed, you come up with some imaginative programs that, uh, like the resilience grants that, um, made a huge difference in the community. And, um, you know, yes, there may not be total agreement, but as long as people remain respectful to one another and, uh, are moving in a positive direction, then it doesn't matter if something that I suggest is adopted or not, if what comes from it is, um, something that's better for the people. So, um, I look forward to working with all of you in that respect and to, um, doing good things for Delphi.
Mr. Roy, you have the previous?
If I bring the ordinance to the city council and you shoot it down, it's the way it works. I mean, that's just, that is the way it works. I will try to, um, make sure that you have the ordinance, ordinances and pack it to you in a timely manner to where you can have time to study it. If need be, I would, um, put video or videos or still pictures with it if it was a traffic issue or something like that. I would do my best to tell you why I think it's important. If you guys don't think it's important and you vote it down, that's your decision, that's the way the government part of that works. I got no problem with that. One of the first ordinances I would suggest upon taking office is, um, the intersection of Monroe and Market Street. One of the first ordinances I would bring to you is the intersection of Monroe and Market Street. It's, it's, um, a situation where due to the parking area, it's very, very hard to see, and you've got to creep out there and really go slow to, and you can't rocket through that unless you're coming, um, southbound. Northbound, east and west, you got to, you got to really watch, especially east and west. And one of the first ordinances I would bring to the council is taking the, um, last two parking spaces on the east side of the street prior to Monroe Street. And, uh, I would be asking for signage that says "No truck parking," because it's, it's bad enough the way it is, but when you've got somebody with, uh, even a, a regular truck, let alone an extended cab, it's hard to see around. And you'll see that parking lot where you'll see compact cars on, and that might be a better solution, compact car loading, or truck parking, whatever it is. You, you know, you guys may look at that and say, "Well, that's, that's a good idea," but I think it'd be better if we put one of those mirrors up there, to where you could look up there, get close to the intersection, see if there's another car coming. So be it. I'm not the end-all, be-all. You've got a better idea and it's, okay, it's going to work, and look here. But that's, that's the way I would do it, and that would be the first piece of legislation given that, that I think.
Have you had a question, Mr. Ray?
So if I didn't piggyback off of a disagreement of the council, um, what's the other disagreement that's likely to work in the next to achieve, I would go about resolving that situation with that. Obviously, we don't all know everything, everyone knows everything. I would go with an agreement or a solution to handle a problem that came up.
Well, that's part of the...
Ms. 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 Were you unmuted when you said that?
No. So, going back, piggybacking off of the disagreement of the council, what is trying to find a solution? You have an issue with a city authority, or they have an issue with you, yes, how would you conduct an agreement to rectify that situation?
Again, like some of the other stuff we've talked about, it's a matter of leadership. It's a matter of respect. I'm not the kind of person that's gonna, you know, march into a department head's office, yell and scream and this, that, and the other. Depending on the severity of the situation, no, it kind of takes different steps. My first, my first step would be to meet with that person and say, hey, I got this, I got this citizen's complaint, I've got my complaint, I've got work not being done, whatever it is, and say, hey, what can you do? What can we do? What can your people do to make this a better situation? And it's a matter of leadership, it's a matter of knowing how to handle people and supervising and things of that nature. But you've got to treat people with respect. The last thing you want to do is go in there and start yelling at that person, embarrass them in front of the community, embarrass them in front of their people or any other people. That's not gonna get the solution that you want, that anybody wants. You've got to sit and talk to them, and you've got to hammer it out, their people too, they have feelings. And, you know, I've learned a lot of stuff over the years about assumptions. And there's a lot of, you know, Sharon's two daughters are driving now, and they'll sit there and they'll be driving along, well, why did I do that? And, you know, they automatically jump into the worst-case scenario, and they'll fall to their own, that's just, you know, that's just the way kids are sometimes. But we fall into that too, through no fault of our own, and we've got to learn from it. We've got to learn not to assumption, not to make assumptions on things. And you know in law enforcement just as well as I do, there's a lot of things you do that the general public doesn't understand, but you're wrong every time, and that's not correct. And so, you need to go into some type of meeting and some type of contact with the person that you are dealing with, with an open mind, say, you know, this happened and I get a call about this and this, this. Why did that happen? What took place to make you do that? Eighty, ninety percent of the time, you know, the public or whomever is complaining may not know all the circumstances. So, you've got to get to the bottom of that and work through it. But it's all a team effort, it's all, you know, when you're up there, everybody needs to work together, just like what you were talking about with the council, just like the mayor and the council needs to work together.
Very first step, of course, is to not go in with an attitude that says, why did you do this? And of course, that's not my style in any case. But, you know, if there is an issue, lay what the issue is out on the table and get feedback from the department that you're talking with, trying to come up with creative solutions. Those could, you know, could very well be that it's a resource issue or something of that sort, but just a miscommunication between the public and the department. So, you have, you need to find out what is behind the complaint. Obviously, you know, the department had an opportunity to fill you in on their perspective of the problem. As laid out, you know, in my five minutes earlier, I've had an awful lot of management experience in my long life, and, you know, I will certainly bring all of that training and mentoring to bear and working with the department. I think we're fortunate to have really good people heading up our departments in the city, and there will be disagreements, obviously, but respecting your employees, respecting their point of view, and getting their input as to what needs to change to make the situation better. And then developing an action plan towards that improvement is how I would pursue.
We're gonna cycle through these lists one more time. President President Congress, do you have any questions? Hold question. Back to all of you, President President Congress, give you a rest day.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman on the floor, do you have any further questions?
No further questions.
Councilwoman Isley? Councilwoman Karen?
No further.
At this point, we have been here for an hour and twenty-five minutes. I would like to thank the council and candidates for the good questions and good answers. At this time, I would like to take a short, say, ten-minute recess, then we will come back and engage in deliberations, nominations, and election. I would ask the council to refrain from talking to each other while we're in this recess, because we do have to come back and have deliberations and discuss publicly, I would like to give people the opportunity to stretch their legs. So, at this time, we will recess until eight forty-one, eight thirty-seven PM, ten minutes from now.